I have, um, I have a mutt. He's a real mush. Yeah, I found him and I thought he was only 40 something. Sixty seven. Big boy and we didn't know what we were doing. Yeah, he's like a small mix, so he's very Jerry. So he's like, it's. No, we adore him. Like, we adore him. Before, it's a lot easier than it was. Yeah.
They'll run around the house. They'll chase each other. Marvel news.
I don't, we adore him, but it's, it's a lot.
Jerry, can talk to him again.
That's like a hundred.
If you lost today.
No.
I would like to advise all those present, I notice that this meeting has been provided into public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. That notice was published in the city website. Copies provided Bergen Record, Ellis Special, North Star Ledger, Jersey Journal, also placed on a bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. Written objections, if any, should be made to the city clerk. Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Fisher.
Here.
Mrs. Imus.
Here.
Mrs. Jabour.
Here.
President Zano.
Present.
Mr. Quintero.
Present.
Mr. Ramos.
Present.
Mr. Russo.
Present.
President Doyle.
Present. We're not going to be doing the proclamation. It's gone. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. So we're starting with a presentation by STV with regard to the 13th, 15th Street Light Rail feasibility study. Director Brown.
You don't want to say anything about first? The election result?
You're, you're, would you like to say something?
No, I just, congra-, of course, congratulations to Emily. We had an election yesterday. We have a new upcoming mayor. Like, I think it's, you know, amazing that we-
We all work here, okay? All right.
Listen, it was-
Congratulations, Councilwoman Jabour.
Yes, I think we should all take a moment to congratulate. We have a new mayor-elect. It's been a long year, and of course, we need to start this meeting with that. So congratulations to you.
And Councilman, Council Quintero.
Yes, Councilman Quintero as well.
Oh, yes, Council, sorry, Councilman Quintero.
Congratulations, Councilman Quintero.
Right, as well as Council-elect Steve Firestone and Caitlin Leeson, who are, I don't know if they're here.
They're not.
Okay. Congratulations.
Director Brown, do you want to?
Yes.
Congratulate?
Congratulations, Mayor-elect Jabour. And good evening, Council President, members of the city council. So my name is, for purposes of record, we all know each other. My name is Chris Brown. I'm the Director of Community Development here with the City of Hoboken. Tonight, we have a presentation for the 15th Street Light Rail feasibility study. As you all are well aware, in 2021, the city adopted the North End Redevelopment Plan, and one of the central tenants of that redevelopment plan was the inclusion of a light rail station. There were two light rail stations anticipated in the redevelopment plan, one on 15th Street, one on 17th Street, and that is the focus of this feasibility study tonight. They're going to go over their findings for a light rail station in that area. So in July 2024, last July, you all adopt, you all approved a contract with STV to conduct this feasibility study. That feasibility study was funded through a community benefit payment from a development in the North End. So all of this is connected through the North End and to further the mission of that redevelopment plan. So, that said, I will turn the mic over to Will Sherman from STV, who will present the findings of the feasibility study.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Can you hear me okay? My name's Will Sherman. I'm with STV. I was the project manager for this study, and will be presenting our findings here tonight. Sorry, me.
I don't know that it's working.
I can hold it up. All right. My name is Will Sherman with STV. I was the project manager for this study, and I'll present, be presenting our findings from this study tonight. As you know, the Hoboken's North End is planned for major, significant transformation. Two and a half million square feet of new mixed-use development, which would be anticipated to add over 5,800 residents and 900 employees by 2045. But at the same time, the North End doesn't have an adequate level of transit access to support this development. The existing Hudsonburg and Light Rail stations are beyond a half-mile walking distance, which is generally accepted as the comfortable limit for people walking to transit. The city initiated this study, as Chris mentioned, in consultation with New Jersey Transit to investigate two potential station locations. 15th Street, which is located at Madison Street, and the 17th Street site at the north end of Clinton Street, on, close to the Weehawken border. Our study investigated both, both locations and options, and recommends the 15th Street Station location as the preferred site for a new Hudsonburg and Light Rail station. The most significant factor is that the 15th Street site avoids some of the significant implementation challenges at 17th Street, including track issues, utility conflicts, as well as the need for coordination with Hudson Tunnel Project. Within this, there are two access configurations we explored with significantly different costs. One is a station that is accessed only via Hoboken with an entrance on Madison Street, which would come to an estimated project cost, all in, of $28 million. The second option is the addition of access to Union City, which would be an elevator and stairs connecting to Manhattan Avenue. This would bring the project cost to $59 million if that option were pursued. At this point, the station funding strategy is to be determined and needs to be, but that may include of city, state, federal, or private funding sources. The diagram on the right shows the 15th Street site, and you can see the horizontal line to the pink dot is approximately where the 15, the Union City access would connect on Manhattan Avenue. Our evaluation looked at a number of factors across five categories. Existing land use and development contacts, planning and redevelopment potential, connectivity and access, construction considerations, and the transit operations, all designed to select an option that has the best benefit for the North End, as 15th Street does, and, you know, we selected this site because it avoids these significant implementation challenges. Notably, both station options would rank among the busiest stations on the Hoboken-Tunnelley Avenue line, based on 2045 ridership estimates. With Hoboken-only access, the 15th Street Station would be the third busiest station on the line, with up to 2,400 daily riders. With the addition of Union City access, this would increase, making it the busiest station on the, on the line, with up to 4,100 daily riders. That's approximately 1,600 additional daily riders accessing the station from Union City, a 67% increase. We advanced the 15th Street site to conceptual design and produced renderings. Some of the notable design features are side platform lengths, which are long enough to provide flexibility for longer train configurations in the future. The area between the station and Madison Street is an opportunity for a station plaza or transit-oriented development, which could include residential, commercial, or other uses. And the optional Union City access structure could be constructed initially with the station or added at a later phase. It's completely optional. Implementation considerations include that property acquisition is required for parcels between the track alignment and Madison Street. And you can see that here. The area in yellow shows property, parcels owned by New Jersey Transit. The station and platforms are located, would be located both in Hoboken and Union City. The dashed red line shows the municipal boundary. New Jersey Transit owns the right-of-way, the tracks, the adjacent parcels, but the area in blue is a privately-owned parcel, which would require acquisition, currently used by a bus company. Going to a little bit more detail about the, the Union City access option, I mentioned this could be built with a station or at a later phase. This would provide an ADA-accessible elevator and stairs connection to Union, Manhattan Ave-, sorry, direct Hudsonburg and Light Rail access for northern Union City residents who are more than a half-mile from the Paris Station and avoid, allow them to avoid a significant detour to the 15th Street site, going along the 14th Street viaduct. However, the trade-offs are the significant additional project costs and maintenance, as well as there are existing stairs between Palisade Ave. and Manhattan Avenue, which may limit some potential ridership for pedestrians with mobility issues unless they were addressed. This shows the design. You can see the elevator and stairs structure kind of in a, in a faded outline on the left image. And again, on the right, the, the pink dot shows where this would connect to Manhattan Avenue. That location is a traffic signal and a signalized pedestrian crosswalk, which connects to the stairs up to Palisade Avenue, as well as would provide access to the Manhattan Avenue sidewalk, traveling north and south. So in summary, you know, we, our study recommends the 15th Street Station site, and there are two options. One, you know, providing Hoboken-only access would come to a project cost of $28 million. Adding the Union City access option would generate, would support greater ridership and reach, but increase the project cost to $59 million. We've included soft costs in this estimate that would take the, take the concept through preparation for construction, investigating alternatives, analysis, conceptual design to a further degree, as well as final design. And now, at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Can I ask, how do you, how do you get ridership estimates for a place that has no buildings currently? And, you know, I'm just curious, the methodology for that?
So in, in this case, we used what's known as a pivot point model, which is a, a tool for, which is a great tool for evaluating station alternatives like this. We used New Jersey Transit's demand estimates and projections. We also updated, which incorporates census data. We also updated those to reflect the projected growth in the North End, based on the development known at this time and anticipated. And from those, you know, we were able to generate the estimates. In summary, the, the idea of the pivot, of the model, is that these stations would be expected to perform in a similar relative way to other stations along this section of the Hudsonburg and Light Rail. And in this case, we focused on the Hoboken-Tunnelley line, because there are more similarities here than there are to the rest of the system.
And you're, I believe I heard you say, this is based on a 2045 ridership estimate?
Yes, that's our forecast year.
And why, why 2045? Why 20 years from now?
It's because we would anticipate that the North End takes a period of time to fully develop. It's also anticipating that growth will happen over time, so we're trying to plan the station when it reaches, you know, that, that point in demand.
Just to piggyback off of Councilman Doyle's question, with the, the number, I know we're not looking at a 17th Street station, but why the number discrepancy between the two of over 1,200 riders potentially at 17th Street as opposed to 15th Street?
So the, the 17th Street-
And it's still in the same neighborhood.
So, sorry, just to clarify, you're asking the difference between 17th and 15th?
Yeah, why, why that big discrepancy of 1,200? It's still the same neighborhood, I know, different locations, but same neighborhood, but why such a discrepancy between the two?
Right. So it's a little hard to see here. Actually, I'll go back to the, so the, the methodology, you know, the focus, without providing access to Union City, the Manhattan Avenue, the Palisade Cliff is a barrier, so people can't access. The 17th Street site would draw some ridership from Weehawken to the north, and, you know, that area reflected in, you know, north of the 15th Street site here, there's the existing development in that area, so that's, you know, it's just able to kind of provide ri-, provide access to the North End, as well as people in Weehawken as well.
Did your study, the feasibility study, look to the economic, do we, you know, I'm thinking if it's the most active station in the whole system, do we derive any, more or less, or any revenue from the ridership? You know, if, if we're being asked to foot a good portion of the bill, I'm hoping you'll say that the New Jersey Transit will give us some of the proceeds.
I, I don't, I don't think that we're anywhere near that. I mean, we're, we're having a conversation, kind of a one-sided conversation, where New Jersey Transit just started talking to us about it, but demonstrating the demand and doing revenue projections against it, and looking at it from a regional standpoint, helping Union City, potentially helping Weehawken, like, that, that's a conversation that hasn't happened. We're doing this kind of myopically in a corner. Also, like, these estimates don't include paying, what, 20-plus million dollars for the piece of property? Like, we should have a conversation with the developer that owns it about building around it, similar to Metro Stop. So it's, it's just still early. These are just, these, these are, you know, the only way to move forward is in partnership with New Jersey Transit, and if we're going to do anything for Union City, Union City's going to pay up, Senator Stack will be a part of it. Like, this is just super preliminary.
I was just asking, Will, whether in the study, there was any economics?
We, we did not investigate the, the return on investment to Hoboken.
Even if it's feasible? Yeah.
Okay.
Did we, I'm sorry, Council President. Did we investigate cost analysis between the two?
Between the two?
Between 15th and 17th Street? Would there be a significant cost difference to build one versus the other?
The, we didn't develop cost estimates for 17th Street, because it's essentially, effectively not feasible to build, because you can kind of see here, the track curvature between Hoboken and Weehawken is significant, and so there's very little, there's a short straight run between those two curves. It doesn't provide a lot of room to build that. And in addition, you know, the complications with working around utilities and Hudson Tunnel, you know, make the, just make it not pan out as the, the right choice. The 15th Street site does have, as you noted, without Union City hack, access, has slightly lower ridership, but it's still very significant ridership. It would serve the North End, so given all these factors, it's the right choice.
Do we do anything, any analysis of the cost of the property that would have to be acquired?
No, I, I don't think I, I may not have noted, but acquisition costs aren't included in this estimate. That would need to be determined.
And do we know whose property it is now?
It's, it's owned by TD's Associates, which is-
That's Tedesco, that's the Academy lots. So, I mean, the acquisi-, I wouldn't necessarily think of it as, there's acquisition cost, there's a cost of paying for property, yes, but, as Councilwoman Fisher mentioned, we were very early on in the planning process for this station. It could be something where we're partnering with Academy for a development project on one of their lots, and there's some sort of a land swap. It could, you know, there's, there's a, there's a wide range of possibilities. So, the land cost wasn't factored into, into the analysis.
Thank you.
Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, just, I wanted to respond to some of Councilwoman Fisher's comments. First, this was a study that the council authorized, approved the funding for, and we're reporting back to the community on this feasibility study. So, you know, I think that's a point I want to make. Number two, the suggestion that we're doing it myopically, or in some kind of vacuum without New Jersey Transit's involvement, is not accurate.
I didn't say that.
Well, you said myopic, that was definitely one of the words you used to describe the process.
I did.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, I didn't interrupt you, though. I'd appreciate the same courtesy.
You could have, though, if I was saying something wrong.
I don't want to interrupt you, Councilwoman. So if I could proceed, is that okay?
Donuts?
Thank you. So what I was going to say is that the reason why we did the feasibility study is because we want to get funding from New Jersey Transit and other organizations to defer the expense. And unless we can demonstrate that this is a feasible location to have this, we can't get that funding. So that is why the council approved this process, and furthermore, I don't know if myopic was a reference to the fact that it was not including consultation with New Jersey Transit, but to the extent that was your suggestion, Councilwoman, that is not true. New Jersey Transit was in consultation with STV with respect to this process. That was reported to our committee, and they were engaged in the process. So the, the fact that New Jersey Transit is aware of the fact that we've had this feasibility study, they've worked with us on this, this is a logical beginning point. It is not, we have a long way to go, but it's an important beginning point, because, as you know, Councilwoman, the entire North End plan centers on having a transit hub at the light rail station at 15th Street. And that's something I know you, it was important to you as well, so as it is to me in the Fifth Ward. So I just want to stress the importance of getting to the point where we have this facility, to have the people who work and live in the Northwest in this new neighborhood to be able to access public transportation, to minimize the number of additional cars that are coming into this neighborhood. This is a critical aspect of the Northwest redevelopment plan, and I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Council President, just so I can correct what he said.
Councilwoman?
So what I said was, this was, this was a process that was done myopically, and only recently did we interact with New Jersey Transit. This is something that I raised and other people here have raised with this administration. I've been on the council for 10 years. It was one of the first things I raised under Mayor Zimmer, who, that administration did nothing. We always knew we needed this in the North End, because we always knew we were going to have a North End plan. We always knew we were going to have thousands of more residents in the northwest corner of Hoboken that would be underserved by public transportation if we didn't have this. So what has happened over the years is, instead of sitting down and looking at it and bringing in all the stakeholders and really understanding that this is a regional transit station, this isn't a Hoboken-funded, we would never run this project. This is a New Jersey Transit station. The point of the feasibility study is exactly what Councilwoman Cohen said, which is to demonstrate at least a major framework for us to have those conversations with New Jersey Transit. And Chris, Director Brown, can attest, they, they didn't want to talk about it for a long time, until recently, right? And now they're having, they're more engaged. And we always said that if we show this to them, like, what it could look like, they'll be engaged, but this isn't, this isn't something the city is going to build, this isn't something that the city is going to pay for. I don't think anyone here would support bonding for this, knowing full well that it would have, that it has an opportunity to serve the surrounding cities. We need to bring everyone in, so.
So, to your point, thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Cohen, appreciate your comments, appreciate all your questions and comments. But just, Will, I don't know if you want to just talk through next steps, and before you talk through next steps, that the city, NJ Transit and the city, other partnering municipalities would have to take to effectuate this? The, we engage, we've engaged with New Jersey Transit, you know, more than a handful of times over the last, I've been in this position about seven years. One of my first couple months, we went down to Newark, and we had a conversation with New Jersey Transit. We've, we've known that the feasibility study has been sort of step number one. And, you know, obviously, getting to feasibility study, we have to pay for the feasibility study, which is why we, we use community benefit dollars from, from a development project. But that's how we are here today. It is step number one. We are at step one. This is absolutely that. But, Will, do you want to just talk through what the next steps typically are for getting a light rail station to fruition?
Yeah, the, the typical next step from this point would be working with key partners, such as New Jersey Transit, such as municipalities like Union City, gauging their interest and discussing next steps, working out a funding strategy, what combination of funding sources could be utilized. And that would then proceed to conducting an alternatives analysis, which would look more in-depth at this station in particular, as well as alternatives to building that station. And you might think that that sounds counterintuitive, you know, after a study about building a light rail station, but the point is also to ensure this, this is the best station, and identify strategies that might be more, that could be phased in or short-term, and so that this could be properly implemented, it could be coordinated with the entire system, and could advance. After that's complete, this would go to final design, at which point, it's really about finalizing, doing, finalizing plans so that this can be bid out and constructed, and then, you know, construction could proceed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks very much for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Great job, Will. Thank you very much. And John Manzoni from STV as well, thank you, thank you guys for all your support.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the second readings, hearing for ordinances. Number one is carried, pending a planning board review, I believe. So the second, which is B-833.
Hearing on an ordinance, amending chapter 192 for persons' disabilities to added reserved parking spaces.
No members of the public have signed up? Motion to close public portion. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oh, sorry.
Have a question?
No.
Frina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Imus.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour.
Yes.
Mr. President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance, amending Article 14 miscellaneous fees for online transactions.
Manuel Rivera Soler.
Good evening, Council President, good evening, Council members of the public, and good evening, Madam Hoboken Mayor-elect. I know that I'm going to find a better way to say that in the future, but no worries. But congratulations, anyway. I'll have more words later. Council President, just a brief question, I just have two. Could members of the public understand the reasoning why these fees or these operation costs have to be amended at this point? How high, what is the amount that they're going to be changed? I looked at the meeting from, pardon me, the last meeting, and I didn't see any, any full conversation that explained that to the people. Again, in the consent, I mean, pardon me, in the packet agenda, it is explained, but not, not as clearly as I would hope. But some members of the public would like to understand a little further, if you could give an example or two as to the reasoning. Is it because there are higher costs, there are more elevation of people using the system, where we need to implement more employees and such? So if, if an example or two, or an explanation around that could be given, it would be very appreciative.
It's from $2 to $2.50. We're changing the provider. The, the $2 fee was circa, maybe a decade ago. The $2 fee was circa maybe a decade ago, so it's not, I think it's just the passage of time and a new provider, it's $0.50, to answer your question.
I appreciate the answer, Council President. You know, I could actually filibuster because I see that I have a minute and 20 seconds, but I will not. I'll wait for my next question.
I thought you stopped talking.
Thank you, Council President. We're turning over a new leaf, Council President. All righty, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, Mr. Farina.
Oh, hey, can I?
I have to close public portion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yep. So I guess, following on some of what Manny said, because I'm not, maybe it's the same question, but, so there's two parts of this. The first one is we're adding on a $2.50 convenience fee for any online processing, period for permitting and licensing, right? So just any permit that's done online for licensing. Yes. And why wouldn't we just increase the rate by $2.50 instead of like a separate fee? Is there a reason?
Are you speaking to the mic?
Yeah. Why wouldn't we just increase whatever the permitting and licensing fees are instead of adding a convenience fee? Is it effectively the same thing, we're just increasing the rate?
So if we were to do that, we would go through and have to ordain every single one of those different fees, which is significantly more, I guess I would just say labor-intensive to go through every single ordinance and amend every single one of them rather than doing a convenience fee, which we're already charging. So we're already charging $2 per transaction, and we're proposing an increase of $0.50.
Is, so the change is only to $2.50, not the whole entire addition? So everything right now that's underlined is not a new full sentence, you're just changing the number from 2 to $2.50?
So right now, we are currently charging $2 for every transaction through HPU Online. The difference is now that we're using a different vendor, so we're looking at all online transactions instead of just HPU Online. So as we discussed previously, we're moving to like an enterprise system that will process all transactions through the same vendor instead of multiple different vendors.
Right.
So through that process, we are consolidating the fees.
This is more of a technical question. This is, does it, before you've made this change, does it say somewhere in our ordinance somewhere that we're charging $2 per transaction?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And are we allowed to charge if it's not in our ordinance?
I don't know the question to that, but online transactions, we've had a $2 online transaction fee through HPU Online since 2012, I believe.
Okay. All right, so this is really then just a 50, it's codifying something that we may or may not, should have already codified, and it's a 50 cent increase, expanded to not only HPU, but also to other types of like dog licenses or whatever other online.
Exactly. Anything that would be processed online moving forward, yes.
Okay. And then the second one is the credit card processing one. What do we do right now? And like, does this, does this impact like parking meters and, you know, our online app?
So this is not related to Park Mobile, so it does not impact parking meters, but I do not, I would have to get back to as to how we currently do Park Mobile. I'm not sure about that. But right now, yeah, the credit card fees are passed on to the consumer.
Okay.
By the vendor.
Okay.
Yeah, by the variety of vendors that we use, yeah.
Councilwoman Russo?
Thank you, Council President. So if we're charging $2, but we don't have that in our code, what is the legal ramifications associated with that? Why are we, I mean, how are we even doing that? We don't have a specific fee in our code, and it's spelled out in our code. How are we charging that fee currently, and how long have we been charging that fee without any authorization by the city council?
2012, she said.
Yeah, so as far as, this is the council's time to either affirm the fee or stop the fee?
Okay. So we've been doing it since 2012, is that correct?
My understanding, yes.
So we're doing it since 2012, and we have never affirmed that as a body? Is that correct?
Hasn't been ordained, that's correct.
All right. So now we're being asked to do that here tonight, and at the same time, increasing that from $2 to $2.50. Just want to make sure we're correct.
Correct.
What, what is the implication if in fact we do not?
Corporate cash, do we need to go into closed session for this?
Why?
Well, the implication would be the fee would stop if you don't ordain it.
I'm just wondering if there's a legal liability question.
There could be a greater conversation, but I can answer the question out loud that the fee would stop. So I said this is your time to either affirm the fee or deny the fee.
Are you, I'm sorry, was there a question there?
Well, I'm trying to avoid us going into a closed session right this second. I'd like to have a deeper conversation about that, or, I mean, I'd ask my colleagues just to vote no on this and then stop the fee.
Or carry it?
Carry it. Fine.
But also, my understanding is that this hasn't covered the entire cost of this application. So if we stop the fee, it's a significant budget hit, so.
Well, I don't, again, I don't know if that's base.
Well, do we want to wait till the end of the meeting and go into closed session? And?
I'm fine with that.
Director, if we were to not, if we were to carry this till the 17th, would there be, other than fees will continue to be charged, I suspect, if?
Well, I have a problem with that, too, but, I mean, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole, and I think the closed session will probably be able to hash some of that stuff out, but.
No objection to carrying.
Yeah, there's no reason why tonight is the night, okay? So why don't we, do we want to, whoever the sponsors are?
Can I ask one quick question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Continue.
Yep. How many transactions a year does the city do? Would you say, again, I'm not pegging you.
Through, my understanding is through HPU Online, we do approximately 30,000 ballpark. I could get you specific numbers.
That's HPU, but that, now we're going to do everybody.
Right, now we're moving to an enterprise system.
What would you guess?
I don't have a guess for the others.
10, another 10, or 40?
Again, I'm not going to give you a wrong answer.
Yeah, I think carrying is the best. Carrying would be.
Let's have a motion to carry.
There is a motion, second. I'll second it. Mr. Farina, a motion to carry this? I don't know that we.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
If we all agree.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Imus?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Cantaro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
All right. That one is carried. Next ordinance, hearing on a bond ordinance authorizing the completion of various water system capital improvements, including public art acquisition, installation, and the capital facility improvements, allocations related thereto, and therefore, the city of Hoboken, County of Hudson, New Jersey appropriating a sum of $5,500,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes of the city of Hoboken, County of Hudson, New Jersey, in the aggregate principal amount of up to $5,47,500, making certain determinations and covenants and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Farina. Mary Andreka. You want the number five, which is 86, okay? No other members of the public have signed up?
Motion to close public portion.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Imus?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Ms. Cantaro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
No.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 145, peace and good order, Section 145 there's 25, image-based automated traffic light and stop sign enforcement technology prohibited to establish a holiday season moratorium through January 15th on unmanned camera-based parking enforcement.
Andrew Wilson?
My name's Andrew Wilson. I'm a Hoboken resident, and I'm incredibly proud of what the clear pilot has achieved in just a few months. It's been an overwhelming success, not by creating new ordinances for people to follow. It's always been illegal to double park. It's always been illegal to block a bus stop. It's always been illegal to overstay a loading zone. We just now have an effective enforcement mechanism that allows us to enforce our city ordinances. And the results have been phenomenal, really. The bike lanes are finally usable. I talk to cyclists every day. We would typically avoid Washington Street because the bike lanes just couldn't be used safely. And now Washington Street's a pleasant place to be. It's incredibly how quickly this program has worked. But not just talking about cyclists, let's talk about bus riders. I had a conversation with a senior director at NJ Transit, and they are incredibly supportive of this program. The 126 bus is a strategically important bus route for the state. It's one of the top five ridership bus routes in the entire state, and it is mired by delays because the bus is stuck behind double parked cars. In addition to that, riders, whenever you get on and off the bus, you have to navigate through this row of illegally parked cars that are blocking the bus stop. This is dangerous, it slows down people's commutes, and we're talking about thousands of Hoboken residents, thousands of your constituents, who use this bus every single day. I know that there have been concerns from some business owners about how this has impacted their business. I've looked at the data. I don't think that this program shows a negative impact. In fact, freight use of the loading zones has basically doubled. Loading zone turnover has increased by, I think, 9%. Parking transactions on Washington Street, so the number of people who are going to Washington Street and parking, has increased this year from year to year, right? So the traffic, the consumer traffic on Washington Street is up, not down. Everyone's, you know, perspective is going to be different. There's hundreds of business owners on Washington Street. But the data shows that this is working really well. If there are any additional concerns about this program, this program can solve those concerns. If we need more loading zones, you guys can ordain a new loading zone anytime you want. If you want to have a conversation about the length of the bus stops, let's have a conversation at the length of the bus stops, that's totally fine. But if we want smart loading zones, right, this technology allows that to happen. If we want to give people 15 minutes of free parking on Washington Street, this program allows for that. If you get rid of this program, we no longer have that capability, right? We go back to how things were. If we go back to how things were and we end this program, this doesn't, that doesn't solve the problem. We just go back to how things were in an unfunctioning state. We remove the ability to effectively enforce our city ordinances, which is really bad. And we're not replacing with anything. This ordinance tonight, it actually talks about how we need to enforce these laws less, right? It doesn't hire more parking enforcement officers to manually walk up and down Washington Street, simply removes the enforcement mechanism and leaves a vacuum. I think that'd be a disgrace to our community, be really bad and disappointing. It would negatively impact our lives, and so I really hope that you vote no on this ordinance tonight, and let's work together to make this program even better than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Jim Vance? Yeah, 836.
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak on this subject that is near and dear to my heart. If I might, a little background. This council, years ago, when there was a plan presented on rebuilding Washington Street and redesigning it in the process, this council took what was a well-thought-out, well-designed plan that met all of the state, city, county, national regulations and rules with regard to how to make a Main Street work with a bicycle lane component. And at the last minute, there were merchants, well-intentioned, concerned merchants who came to the city council and said, oh, this will ruin our business. We have to continue to operate as we always have. And so the city council, in their infinite wisdom, decided to change the plan. The original plan had the curb, the protected bicycle lane, the parked cars, travel lane, and on the other side, the same thing. It works. Among other things, it draws bicycle riders, who are now afraid to ride on that street, to participate as shoppers on that street. At any rate, the change was made, and the merchant said, oh, great, we'll just keep doing what we always did. And the bicycle lanes, which provide safety, provide access, became basically places you could abandon your car for five or 10 minutes and walk into a store or get a piece of pizza or chat with your friends, whatever. And so the issue of making that street work for everybody was just put off because now the merchants had their spots, the parking enforcement people have an extremely tough time. I know that under the old circumstances, they were yelled at, spit upon, treated terribly for doing their jobs. And I don't want to go back. I want to use this system to make sure Washington Street works properly and to, this system is forcing the merchants and the rest of us to start to deal with the real problem. And that's what's happening tonight. So what I really think in the long run we need to do is do what we were supposed to do in the first place, implement an appropriate design. But right now, this concept of throwing the baby out with the bathwater is going to fix all of the problems on Main Street, on the avenue, is not feasible, and we need to, we need to vote it down, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Mary Andreka?
Write this down.
Don't touch it, Mary.
I want to. Mary Andreka, 159 9th Street. I have to follow them. My understanding from this, it was, it's a moratorium through January 15th. It does not say get rid of it permanently. It's, a moratorium means stop it until this date to this date. I don't think that's egregious. I think it's being decent for the holiday season. If you notice, the shops are disappearing. I noticed it bluntly the other day, and I was speaking to a few people, and I said, yeah, there's 30, there's 30 empty storefronts. And I go, I said, really? And the other guy said, no, there are 49. And I said, 49? He counted them. I can't prove or disprove that, but I did see downtown here, when you're on the east side, empty, after empty, after empty, after empty, after empty, you know? side, empty after empty after empty after empty, you know? Maybe we don't need shops on Washington Street. Maybe we just need the restaurants that can last a few months or a year, the people walk to them, you don't need a car, and that will solve that problem. A moratorium, give them, gosh, this was just one little break. It's not going to go away. I do have concerns about sick animals at my vet. The people that have asked me the timeframe, they've got, they have a sick animal dying, they've got to stop and run in. I've done it myself, but I've walked it, and they take the animal. But my understanding, you're only allowed 15 minutes or 20 minutes, if that much, before you're ticketed, and then I understand they will only ticket you once a week. Is this true? I need to know this because I have to tell people who ask me this. Nobody wants, I believe the ticket's $150. I could be wrong. Am I right or wrong? But the Main Street that was spent so much money on, benches are gone. It's not friendly for people. You're going to get just your delivery people and then your, maybe your derelicts that supposedly the reason the benches are gone because they're urinated on. It's not a very friendly town anymore. It's not a friendly Main Street anymore. And that's sad because I don't have a car, and I use that Main Street. I need it. I can't go to many of the restaurants. They're too expensive, and they give me migraines, so that's my personal issue. But Main Street's usually of hardware stores and beauty shops and vets and, you know, lock shops and stuff like that. I don't think Main Streets were made for purposely just bicycles. I'm not telling anybody not to ride a bicycle, but I don't see the bicycle except for maybe Mr. Vance carrying stuff in his little cart or his little basket. You know, the trouble with this town has always been, they always make it for certain people, and they certainly, I don't fall in any of the categories. It doesn't matter how long I've been here, I don't fall in here, but it's just a moratorium. Give them an F'ing break. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. You might speak with Director Francesi in the back to get the questions to...
About the benches?
The questions that you just asked. No, not about the benches, about...
Why?
You just asked, is it $150? Is it 15 minutes? You asked a series of questions, and he can answer those. Okay. I apologize for answering him. Manny Rivera Soler Manuel, excuse me?
Thank you, Council President, once again. Manuel Rivera Soler, 6th Ward. Thank you, Council President. Yes, the definition, moratorium, a temporary prohibition of an activity. That is all that's being asked of this amendment. Pardon me, ordinance. I believe that it is important to explain to members of the public exactly what is going on. When we have ordinances such as this, when I tell you, sometimes they are complicated to read with their as's and the what has used. I'm just using that terminology right now, but it is important for people to understand that we understand what some members of the public are saying. Of course, illegal parking has always been illegal, right? Or double parking. But we don't need, as they say, to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We need a cohesive implement of this plan. This was done wrong from the beginning and is wrong now. There is no reason that people, members of the public, could not have more input on this. I understand the safety reasons, and I understand everything. And as Mary Andreca said, sometimes it does feel like it's one-sided city. It should be for everyone, for everyone. I am a pedestrian. Of course, I'm gung-ho with there not being double parked cars so I can see where I'm crossing. But I'm also afraid, right? If I'm going to cross that very same intersection or that very lane, that a e-bike or a bike scooter, a person who's not following the rules, not the ones that are, but I am the bad actors, is that we could get run over, and it has happened before. By a sliver, I haven't been impacted, and I'm sure other people haven't, but that is one of the concerns. But the main concern here is, in regards to this ordinance, when you say a moratorium, are you saying, again, to the 15th, are the cameras going to be completely shut down? Are the cameras going to continue to take pictures and not affect the people who are in those pictures? Will you retain those pictures for educational purpose for the future or for statistics? Will those pictures on that camera, if they're going to be left on, going to be reviewed, and who is going to continue to review them, and are they going to be, again, kept on record for some unforeseen reason? And again, this is, you know, safety, of course, but again, there's this element of privacy, of people's not having their images in these photos all the time, even if they're a split second or whatever. But again, that is the importance of explaining. Again, I watched the meeting, when I spoke before, I watched the meetings again. Sadly, the one, the past meeting, less than 100 people, and it's sad. So I exert people to watch the meetings if they can't come here, but at least give their input because they could always email each and every one of you separately or email the city clerk's office, and he will let you, let the council members have that information. But to sum it up and to wrap it up, Council President, to not vote for this today to pass, to at least give a chance for people who are visiting in Christmas, who do not have all of the details, that they cannot stop there a second or two, and have that chance to purchase something in our local stores or grab something to take out. So I urge you to please vote for it to the 15th. Let's hope that then we can at least speak more upon it and address it even further in the future, just like the Grand Street, that is another thing, that is another eyesore. But anyway, that's what I have, Council President, and I yield back, and I thank you for your attention, and I respect everybody's opinion, but this is mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel Rivera Soler. Henny Ahmed?
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank all of those that had the courage to put their name on a ballot. It's tough. It's a tough thing to do, to put your name out there, and I'm sure your families have to deal with it also for the last several months, and we're thankful that you all did that and put the time in. Thank you. About this issue with the parking, there are bike riders that follow the law, like Jim Vance, like Council President Jim Doyle, and then there are those that are just reckless. No helmets, go up one ways and do all the things we don't want to see them do. There are drivers that do the same, but we have license plates. We have driver's licenses, so we could track those people, people that continually drink and drive or continue on red lights or reckless driving. We don't have the same system for bikers. So we're left to the device of just either cursing each other out, or you see fistfights all the time in New York City and other places where biker meets pedestrian and/or biker meets mom with a stroller and finds out, you know, how she's going to respond when she almost gets hit with a bike. The system that you have here with the cameras, I think, is not comprehensive enough. A system doesn't work unless you have all the parts to it, and there's a very important part that's missing here. Drivers don't want to break the law. We don't wake up every day and say, you know, how could I be reckless today? But you have a kid that has a fever. You have to go out and get medicine, so someone's going to sit in the car, and you're going to run to CVS and get your medicine and run out. And yeah, you have a car. You know, not many two-year-olds do well on a 10-speed in the month of December. So the realistic part of it is that cars are here, and people are going to drive cars. And we don't want people to break laws, but you have to design a system that can accommodate. And part of that is maybe just taking a mid-block, we paint two red spots, and you make it 15 minutes, and maybe you put the camera there to say, hey, this is a, or a 10-minute spot. This is a drop-off spot. This is the spot where, you know, your husband or wife, they have an injured ankle, and they're going to physical therapy. They're not going to walk up the block. You're going to drop them off as close as you can to the location that they're going to go to, and the businesses are the heart and soul of the city. We don't want to see, you know, a chiropractor or a foot doctor or a pizza shop or anything. We don't want to see them go out of business. It's not the intent here, and this council is well-intentioned because you hear it every day from your constituents. We all live here. So what I'm asking is, this pause also helps you to give you time to reflect and say, how do we make the system better? How do we design the system so that people, they're not bad people? They could function in the city and not, you know, feel bad. And I know it's changing already because I've changed my own behavior. I shop less south of 7th. It's a fact. When I'm driving home from work or when I'm coming back into town, and I know those cameras there on 7th, I say, if I can't get it north of 7th, then I'll just go home and figure it out. Maybe I order from somewhere else, or maybe I stop somewhere else for a cup of coffee in the morning. And that's not good. That's bad behavior changing. I'm not saying you should double park, but, you know, even those loading zones on a corner, if there was something to give us a chance just to pull up, do what we have to do, get back in the car and go. And then the other part is that we have Uber drivers throughout the city, but we know where they are on the weekends. They're going by the path train, picking people up, and that's awesome. We don't want people to drink and drive. Please, take an Uber. If you're listening, take an Uber. But these Uber drivers stop right along, you know, in front of Dunkin' Donuts over there on Hudson Place and, can't even think, on River Street, and they clog up the whole system, but there's nowhere for them to drop. We do it for shuttle buses. We do a good job of that all week. So I think that we have to realize on the weekends that people are going to come out to drink, and they're going to do things, and there should be areas where the Uber driver waits. He shouldn't just sit double parked and nailing your whole system for someone else wants to come and drop someone off by the path train. So I think there should be a comprehensive look at that. The other one I want to mention is the bollards. The bollards don't have to be on every corner, and if they're going to be on a corner, let's try to look at the blind spot. A blind spot's when you're driving down a one-way and there's a UPS truck blocked in front of the stop sign, that causes the blind spot. We know where the blind spot is. You have some of the smartest traffic engineers that work for you guys with your contracts. There should be bollards there so you don't block the blind spot. But on the non-blind spot side, there shouldn't be bollards there. Let someone drop the kid off. Let someone pick someone up for soccer practice. Let them use the city the way the city's designed. It's not just designed for bikers. It's not just designed for cars. It's designed for all of you and all your friends and family that live here. So this is a good opportunity to take, you know, a month or so and think about it and ask tough questions of your professionals, and let's try to design the system a little bit better so that it gives the businesses a chance, it gives the constituents a chance, it gives you guys a chance to function. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed. No other members of the public are signed up to speak?
I wish to close public portion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I would like to start, you know, Councilman Fisher. I mentioned on the 5th, when this first was on and then it was carried, I emailed you, and then I emailed you on the 17th as well, and I'm with Mr. Wilson, so I'm not saying this just because I'm hostile to this moratorium, but this is not a moratorium. If you look at the whereas clauses in the ordinance, the eighth whereas clause talks about a moratorium till through January 15th. The whereas clauses are not the law. The law that we're passing is paragraph B. The whereas clauses are aspirational paragraphs that say, we are in favor of doing something good or bad, or so. The law is B, and in B, there is no word January 15th. There's no word moratorium. So if this passes, we are banning the use of these until we were, if and when we would amend it back in January 15th, apparently. So if your intention is to do it permanently, then this will do it regardless of the aspirational nature of the whereas clause that says, you know, we want it to be a moratorium, and yet it is not. And Corporation Counsel, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but...
There's a second. It should be at the bottom, and I don't have it in front of me, but there should be... Now, there should be the third page where it says, actually, let me have that back.
The third page of the automatic, like, there's no substance beyond that page.
It says that the, yeah, there's, it's missing a page, but it does say in the section two, the when it's effective, it says it's effective through January...
Shall be in effect until January 15, 2026.
Under section four, effective date, the ordinance shall take effect immediately upon passage and publication as provided by law and shall be in effect until January 15, 2026.
Okay.
Although, let me just say, that sounds more like it's not an effective date. An effective date is when an ordinance goes into effect. This is like an end date. It's like the opposite of an effective date.
Well, it's both.
It's a no longer, I mean, is that...
I say that it's both because it says the ordinance shall take effect immediately, which means once you pass it, and then it has an end date. So it's beginning and an end.
I've never seen that, but...
The sunset, dude.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Quintero?
A question for Director Gonzalez. This is under the original camera-assisted enforcement's under a pilot, right?
Yep.
When's that pilot supposed to expire?
End of this year.
End of this year? So if we do nothing, the cameras will be turned off on January 1st, and per Mr. Ahmed's point, we can reevaluate and think about how more comprehensively we want to do this. For Mr. Wilson and Mr. Vance, we can, you know, make sure that we keep any future plans, thinking about bicyclists, pedestrians, and drivers. The city is not for cars. The city is not for bikes. The city is for human beings. And how, yes, really. And that's what we need to think about when we're making these plans, right? So we get frustrated that we don't enforce our laws, and then we put in tools to enforce our laws, and then we get frustrated with the things that we put in place. So it was a pilot. It was always intended to be a pilot. Pilot expires on December 31st. I'd rather see that pilot complete, collect all the data, reevaluate, and then make smarter decisions moving forward.
Council President?
Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, just to follow on Councilman Quintero's point, it makes no sense to say that there's a suspension until January 15th when the cameras are turned off on January 1st. Well, that's illogical. The program ends December 31st. The point of the pilot program is to collect the data to determine how it's working, which is what Mr. Ahmed and Mr. Vance, that we should assess this. That's what the point of the pilot program is, to collect the data for this 90-day period, see what we find at the end. Did it work? Did it not work? Could it be done better? Should it be discarded altogether? I know some people in the campaign suggested that. Well, that's what we've collected the data for. That's why we put in the technology to learn this. I can tell you that tonight, from my non-scientific personal observation, I rode a city bike from 11th Street to City Hall and never had to go into Washington Street. The bike lane was clear from 11th Street all the way to here, which is something that we all want. I mean, I think there's nobody on this council who believes that cars should be double parked in the bike lane and that that should not be enforced, which is exactly what the situation was until before this program went into effect. So it appears to me to be working from the perspective of having clear bike lanes, as Mr. Wilson testified, and the users of New Jersey, the members of Bike Hoboken. But I can tell you another experience that was very common that I've had, and I'm sure others have had it, is getting off of a bus when you're coming home from work, when I commute home from New York City, and having the bus drop me in the middle of Washington Street because there's a driver who's parked in the bus stop, and the bus cannot get to the curb. It is impossible for the bus to get to the curb. And recently, I came to a council meeting on a bus, and when I entered the bus, I mentioned to the driver who was parked in the bus stop, and I had to board in the middle of Washington Street, you know, this is a bus stop, and here's my bus, and he lowered his window and started barking at me, and the driver of the New Jersey Transit bus opened his door and started talking to the driver who was sitting in the, because there's a sense of entitlement because they've always done that. In fact, we all got a letter, an email, from a business in Hoboken who sent us two electronic tickets with pictures of their drivers in a bus stop, unloading, complaining about the fact they're being... about the fact they're being ticketed because they'd always parked in the bus stop for. And they've gotten two tickets and this has never happened. And they're, and they're outraged. And guess what? They're not parking in that bus stop when they're loading and loading anymore. So the point here is that we're, we're, I believe we're improving the business climate because people are going to get from one end to Washington Street quicker because buses are not having to load and unload in the middle of the street. They're loading and unloading in the bus stop where they should be. And it's better for bikers who want to come and patronize businesses because they can get from point A to point B and not be scared to go use those bike lanes. And again, this is only, we're talking about just another 20 something days. So, you know, we're, we would be truncating the data collection. We've made the investment in getting these cameras to get this data. I think we should just go to December 31st, complete the process, assess the data, have it report back to the council and then decide, did it work? Did it not work? What, what should we do? I think by cutting this program off immediately, which is what would happen if this, that's the effective date would be immediately, we're, we're depriving the community of the data which is being collected. And for the people who want to assess how things are going, we're going to be losing that data and we're never going to get it. Thank you, Council President.
It can't be immediate.
Council President.
Well, that's, that's... The mayor doesn't sign them.
Well, right. If, well...
Council President.
Upon...
As, as one of the co-sponsors, first of all, none of us, I don't think there's anyone on this dais that wants to see illegal parking in the bike lanes. I don't think anyone wants to see illegal parking in the bus stops at all. We've had it for a long time. It's been a big complaint by a lot of people and no one's questioning that. A year and a half ago, when Ryan Sharp, our former director, came to this body and presented to this body the potential for these cameras, the entire conversation was about how do we address the double parking, but in a way that we accommodate the need that it effectively is double parking and parking in illegal spots. So it was, it was a comprehensive conversation, borrowing the phrase that Haney said. It wasn't just a one-sided conversation about whether or not bikes could ride in a, in a bike lane. It was talking about all the stakeholders and all of the changes that we could make to deliver short-term parking, a 10-minute spot. We had a robust, it was almost a half hour conversation on the topic. And it was a great conversation and Councilman Jabor, myself, Jen Giattino, we all were like, this could be like good for the community, right? Like if we had the ability to allow people to stop legally for 10 minutes, whether we charge them or not, if we had the ability to have smart loading zones. And Ryan Sharp came and said, I'm going to come back. We're going to collect data and then I'm going to come back and we're going to have this whole conversation about how to make changes, update our ordinances to have a comprehensive change to our commercial district. But that isn't what, and, and ask the city council to approve it. So we are going to have this partnership between our parking director on a really important topic involving all stakeholders, including our businesses, residents, everyone. And we are going to have a continuous conversation. But that's not what happened. What happened was the mayor rolled out a pilot on his own in a way that intentionally circumvented any feedback from the city council, intentionally with one goal and one goal in mind, which is, of course, a headline. But it was very specifically to say that he had cleared double parking for the bike community. And that's a great goal. And that's one that we would, I ride my bike, Diane rides her bike, we all ride our bike. I don't know if everyone does, but a lot of us on the dais ride bikes. And that's a great goal, but it didn't at all factor in any feedback from the businesses. And we've heard from the businesses, not only in this room, have several businesses come saying that their businesses are down 10 and 20% and their seasonal sales, this is the busiest time of year for them and their seasonal sales are down because of exactly what Mr. Ahmed said. People just are not coming. Not only are they not coming, but delivery, deliveries are not happening. As a result of that, the mayor came and he put a statement out, didn't come and change the law. And he said, even though we have a law on our books that says double parking is illegal, I'm letting the public know that I am actually going to allow a violation of that law in certain circumstances. We are going to turn our head for commercial delivery vehicles for a certain period of time. We are going to turn our head for residents doing drop-offs. So now we have subjective rules that aren't even in writing just to accommodate people that were frustrated with this. And all we're saying is, let's just allow the businesses breathing room through the end of this season so we're not negatively impacting them and let's bring back a comprehensive set of ordinances, right? Do it for the right reasons. And, you know, this is, parking in Hoboken is a zero-sum game, right? I, when we had, I've, I've had two conversations with Otomus. We had it originally when they first mentioned this to us before it came to the full city council or before it was, was put out. And, you know, I said to them, did you talk to the businesses? No. This is about double, clearing double parking and safety. Did you talk to the residents? No. This is about clearing double parking for bikes and safety. That's it. They kept saying it over and over again. I'm like, well, what about all the other stakeholders? Tiffany, you don't understand, we're going to clear the double parking. And I said, well, do we, do we want to learn why they're double parking? What businesses they're supporting? What we're about to disrupt? Tiffany, this is just about clearing it for the bikes. That's what they said at that time and it was super frustrating. We had another conversation just a few days ago and it was a very constructive conversation. They went through some of the statistics that Andrew Wilson from Bike Hoboken just mentioned. I'm not exactly sure where he gets all his statistics when none of us are given them, but we went through, we went through just some of the statistics on, as measured by, you know, reduction in double parking. But is that the measure? Should we be measuring the amount of sales that our businesses in this area have declined? Like, you know, we're going to get data? What is that data? Are we measuring sales decline? Are we measuring the number of tickets given to people, the disruption of residents that can't do drop-offs? You know, are we doing any of that? That's not part of this pilot. This pilot is very specifically measuring, coming out and saying, we have reduced double parking by X without identifying a alternative place for those people that need to park. The, um, you know, all this does is say, let's pause it. Let's take the opportunity to, we have a new mayor coming in, we'll have a new, I'm happy to hear that this pilot's coming to an end no matter what. We have a new opportunity to do all of this right. And all we're saying is, we heard the businesses, we understand the safety improvements, but if we just pause, let the businesses be able to generate their sales through the holiday, we can get to January and actually implement something that makes sense for all of the stakeholders. One last thing, and this is to Jim Vance. So the one thing that has been missing from the conversation since we did the redo of Washington Street is there has never been a conversation with the businesses. The reason why we started the Hoboken Business Alliance was because of how disruptive the construction of Washington Street was and how the businesses felt dejected and not considered in anything that happens. That was why we tried to put an advocacy group together for our businesses and commercial property owners. When that was built, at that time, there was no discussion with the businesses. We could have had a better outcome had we just taken a more comprehensive view instead of a single sole goal, which is to accommodate bikes on Washington Street. We need to think about all the stakeholders. I hope everyone supports this tonight.
Can I mention one thing? The only other thing I would add to all this is that, you know, from December 22nd to December 31st, you could probably land a 747 on Washington Street. There's, there's not a lot of activity. Hoboken clears out. So I guess if we're all concerned about collecting data, we're really only looking at a few weeks here of the moratorium where you would miss collecting. And I think, you know, Tiffany, you and I were privileged enough to see some of the preliminary stats from Otomus. And I was very impressed with some of the things they said they can do and improvements that could be made with loading zones and smart loading zones and using the curb in a way that increases turnover, that allows people to, you know, run into the, to the pet store and pick up a 40-pound bag of dog food, which I can't put on my bike and ride home. So, you know, I guess I'm just saying that I don't feel that the moratorium is in any way going to change the outcome of what we would be doing with this system because I think it, it's generally agreed that a lot of positive things can come out of it.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
Councilman President Zano, did you ask?
Yeah, aye. So Councilman Cohen said that, uh, he was talking about in the middle of the street getting in a bus. Well, I can tell you every day I pick my son up at school and get off on Second and Washington or get off on Fourth and Washington. And I have to go out of the bus first because I have to protect my son from getting hit from a bike. And this goes into the conversation about responsibility and accountability. And so you, as an adult, getting out of a car in the middle of the street, the bus has stopped all the traffic around you. For me, I have to walk outside and protect my son from getting hit on a bike because he's not looking for a bike coming down the way. So I just wanted to address that one. It's pretty simple. I think Councilwoman Fisher said it pretty clear. We lied to. I called up Director Sharp in his private career now and asked him the questions. And he told me, I was going to make a presentation to you. We told you that we were going to give you the data. We didn't get the data. If we would have got the data, we'd be having a better conversation right now. It's pretty simple. It's accountability, it's transparency. That's all we asked for. Instead, we've had some things where people have doubled down, doubled down on it. I got pieces of information. I asked about 20 questions and I think they're still getting me a lot of the answers to see this data, but I, I guess Andrew might see data that we don't, even though I've asked the administration to see it. So again, if you believe what's always on a nixal, I saw some different data when I looked at the data that they gave me. So it's all subjective. So at the end of the day, what we are asking for, none of us has said, because we all voted for it, because we listened to them. And we said it was a good idea. And I remember when I sat on the Transportation Committee, let's look at it. But we were told it was loading zones. And right now, things have changed for businesses. Tariffs have hidden substantially. Delivery costs have hit them substantially. Box trucks are not being used anymore. 18-wheelers are being used because it's more efficient, because the cost of tires, gas, insurance, you name it. So now you see more 18-wheelers on Washington Street. Our loading zones can't even put them in there. We had a, a deal with Amazon, that Amazon was clogging up a loading zone all day long, creating double parking. So we've looked at several things that happened. Things have changed. I mean, if we're really talking about that there's not enough parking on Washington Street, then let's clear the parklets out. Get them all out. We'll fix the, we'll fix that, we'll fix a couple of problems there. But if we're going to do that, we should have looked at things like that. We should have looked at expanding the size of the loading zones or decreasing the bus stops. The buses do not pull into the bus stops. The buses do not pull into the bus stops. I don't know how many times I have to say this. They do not pull in, period, car or no car. And they are actually a traffic calming obstacle. So guess what? They stop and the traffic is calmed. And if you want to get to Washington Street down to 8th Street in eight minute, in, in two minutes, then speed up the light speed, the cycle of the lights. But at the end of the day, in the beginning of this, there was no economic study done as a part of this. There was nothing done for the businesses. And I trust the businesses' bottom line over I do what the administration says is, while I don't agree with them all the time, I was willing to work on this. But when I have a business come in and saying, and anybody that says, oh, that's garbage, that's their bottom line. If you walk up and down the First Ward, it's a ghost town. All on the west side of the street, it's empty from second down. Traffic is not existent. So everybody can enjoy riding on Washington Street. I'm happy and it's safe and all that other fun stuff, but I don't have traffic. If there's no traffic, these businesses are not making money. And I don't see bikers pulling over and jumping in and spending money in those businesses because they're down. One, one, the general store said she makes 18% of her business of the year in December. In December, she has a balloon business that she picked up because she could subsidize things. And people run in and run out, try to get 60 balloons in the car, she said. Now, all we're doing is asking for that. We're, we're the one town that doesn't, in Hudson County, that actually doesn't give a holiday season parking pass. We give four hours. Our parking garages are packed. I live across from one. It's full at 9:30 in the morning. So where can people go park? They can't. To, to Haney's comment about the bollards, same thing. I mean, I'm not, we're not asking for every single one to be removed, but we got to do something. We can't just institute laws like this or ideas like this or pilots like this when we don't solve for all the other things. The First Ward is very different from every other ward. We are a war zone for all the quality of life issues. And everybody seems to forget that. Not once did somebody come and talk to me, hey, we're going to do this. I've got all the fast food up from First to Third, right? All the delivery drivers, by the way, all our immigrant delivery drivers, majority of them are picking up food. So we're hurting their ability to make money. My businesses have said they cannot get delivery drivers to come in and pick up food. I've got Empirian who struggled because we took away their ability for their drivers to pick up their orders because the majority of their orders were going out of town. And Uber drivers and Lyft drivers would come in and pick it up on a side gig and they had nowhere to park their car to pick it up. So Empirian was struggling with 50%. That's right out of the, the business owner's mouth. That's why he tried to go look and he's opened up in the old bird spot. He's trying to make ends meet. He's going to be stuck with no parking and no delivery up here at the path station for construction. So there is an aspect of parking that keeps these businesses alive. We were asking and simply asking, and I'm still asking for the information that I've seen already. I don't know where you're looking at the numbers that what the, what the mayor's putting out, but the numbers that I saw were very different. And the numbers were put out that maybe that the number of, in the first month, there was a bunch of tickets and then there was like a little bit of tickets. And by the way, the number of tickets in the loading zone of over 15 minutes was very, it was 100 in the data that I got. So I was still asking for more data. I asked for, if these cameras can do everything, tell me the number of bikes that are going. In an hour, I can tell you, delivery bikes are up 50% since 2022. The recreational bike or the user of the city bike is flat per hour. So listen, I'm going to help everybody, but at the end of the day, when my businesses are crying or they're screaming or they're complaining, I got to listen to them because I don't need all of Washington Street ghost like a ghost town. So I'm asking just till January to the new administration, when, when council or when Mayor-elect Jabor comes in, that we can have a conversation on how we can make sure that the businesses in the First Ward are included in this conversation and not just force-fed that we're going to do this. Because it's not only about cars, it's about deliveries too. It's very difficult to get deliveries in Hoboken. You get charged extra. And any fines that that delivery truck has to drop things off, it gets passed right on to the, the business owner. So this is about businesses as well. And we didn't do any part of an economic study in this. So we're just asking in the busiest part of the season, take a pause. That's it. It's about the businesses. It's about my Washington Streets. It's about your Washington Street. And we need to think about how we keep those businesses open.
Mr. Freena, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Imis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
No.
President Zano?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Quintero?
No.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
No.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
No.
So hearing on an ordinance of the City of Hoboken and the County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing the City Code, Chapter 65A, entitled Affordable Housing. Manuel Rivera Soler.
All right, Manny.
Okay. No other members of the public?
Motion to close public portion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Imus?
Yes.
Mr. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance, Chapter 190Dash11, entitled Loading Zones to Add Loading Zone to Jackson Street between Observer Highway and Newark Street.
No members of the public are signed to speak?
Motion to close public portion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Imus?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Resolutions?
Public comments on resolutions. Manuel Rivera Soler.
Council President, I'm going to say some expressions first before I give you the agenda, consent agenda. If I don't have time, it'll be okay. But I would like to mention, I feel like I'm too high. I would like to mention the petition and proclamation that was done for a beloved member of the community. So I would just like to say these words in case I don't have enough time. But this is for the proclamation, which is in the agenda, so I don't think I'm breaking any rules. But anyway.
This is not a resolution.
I know it's not a resolution, but it's in the agenda. It's beneath the consent agenda. Is that correct?
Pardon? Well.
Either way.
Go ahead, Manny.
Either way, sir.
Merry Christmas.
I appreciate that. Oh, wow. Christmas came early.
Why should I wish to Merry Christmas tonight, Manny?
Thank you, sir. Council President, it's just brief. I don't think it'll take anything away from any member of the public if I am the last member and the only member of the public there, so I do appreciate the Christmas gift. Thank you, sir, for your generosity, and thank the council. So I would like to say, my words here tonight are heartfelt. I would like to add myself to the petition or to the proclamation, because it wasn't done here or I didn't see it, or else I would have said something, but I appreciate it. I would like to say to the Reverend Monsignor Father Michael A. Andriano, I could never say his name correctly, that's why I call him Father, I would like to wish, Father, the most kindest person you could ever have in our community, his faith, the way he shares his faith with us, with the Catholic community and Hoboken in general. He is a blessing and a treasure for the community of Hoboken, a son of Hoboken. Know him. And I just want to say to him that we will never forget all of the memories and all of the help he's given to the public and he's given to the community, especially I as a Catholic, and him being a father who I speak to. I would like to say thank you to him, and I would like to say thank you to those of you who gave him this proclamation, the Honorable Mayor and everyone else. Thank you, Council President. Now, Council President, again, I appreciate you giving me the time. Now, since I do have the extra time, to say consent agenda. You know, Council President, in all due faith, since you gave me a Christmas gift, I will give you a return Christmas gift. I will not speak any further on the consent agenda, because I know that you will do your due diligence and you will vote appropriately for the community. Thank you, Council President. Now you're back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Manny. No other members of the public have signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So polling from the consent agenda. Excuse me?
A1.
Wait, I'm not done yet. Sorry. CC1. Sorry, CC1.
CC1. Did you say wait?
Yeah, just one second, sorry. I thought there was one more.
All right.
Did we already say T1? Sorry.
Excuse me?
T3.
T3. Okay. Mr. Farina, everything other than A1, A2, CC1, T1, and T3.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Imus?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
So on to A1, which was a resolution approving the noise waiver request for Saturday construction at 301 Washington Street in Hoboken.
Council President?
Okay, we can do A1 first, but we got claims, right? I pulled claims.
Oh, you want to, okay. I will do it after this one.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, just a brief explanation for the public on A1, why we're doing it.
So we received a request from the architect on behalf of the owner and contractor to add the ability to do Saturday construction at this property. Their rationale was allowing Saturday work would potentially save approximately three months from the total construction duration, which would revise their anticipated project completion from May of 2027 to March of 2027. And that was their rationale, so.
What's the rationale for the added benefit to the community? Or how does this benefit the community by increasing the?
Because it would shorten the construction duration and the associated noise with, you know, the project in general.
Normally.
But it would add Saturday construction, so I'm not, it would add Saturday construction, which is a trade-off for the duration of the project.
And normally, when we do these, I mean, it's usually for like a public project, or it's, this is a private project, this has nothing to do with.
This is solely.
PSE and G, water replacement lines, sewage lines, nothing like that, right?
This is solely their request. We are simply passing their request along to you for your review and consideration.
I would ask my council colleagues to vote this down today.
You're going to talk about.
Okay.
Councilman President Zano?
Yes, please. While the developer has been very responsive when we've had complaints, I will say that, so I can't say anything bad. I've had massive issues with my residents on Court Street with this. One, I think the administration should have reached out to the councilmen so I could go ask those neighbors that are directly impacted by this, because they've had their buildings shaking. They've had stuff fall off their shelves. I've sent you guys that stuff. They have, again, a graphic email I sent you the other day, which, I'm sorry, I sent it, but they sent it to me, that they don't have lighting in the back now, because they used to have the light in the parking lot that helped keep that area lit, and it's being used as a bathroom now. Hopefully, the developer, and maybe that, this is if you communicated with me, I could say, hey, they're going to put lights in if we can maybe work on maybe Saturdays. So I think before we do anything, especially for a private project where my neighbors have already been dealing with issues, that, one, the administration should have reached out to me.
You have the right to pull it.
And then go from that. I mean, I'm asking that, I mean.
You have the right to pull it, because it's in your ward.
Okay.
Our council rules allow the ward to pull it.
The one time, just, and let me go, let me speak to the neighbors over there. I know the answer is going to come back and it's going to be no. They're not going to be happy, but I will go and talk to everybody on Court Street and send them emails to let them know that this is what the city would like to do, or the builder would like to do, so I can get you some information back.
For what it's worth, I mean, I'm comfortable voting no. You know, I mean, it's not what Councilman Russo said. I mean, if you want to go and talk to the neighbors, you could do that, but.
I mean, if you guys are willing to join me in voting no, I mean, I would be happy.
I'd actually rather have Paul to talk to the neighbors. No, I'm serious.
The neighbors might say, we don't want this all summer.
Yeah, they might want it, this will shave off three months. They might want it done.
Listen, I just went through it on Madison Street. It was like, it's disastrous. Every waking moment, they had construction. You know, our weekends are precious, especially if you have little kids, so I don't think it's something we should do, but by all means, go speak to whoever you need to.
And I think we often defer to the council person anyway on the noise waivers or things like this.
I'm going to tell you, they're going to probably come back upset. I'm just, but I mean, I'd be willing, if you guys give me the time, the next meeting, I will go and speak with them.
This is an instance where, obviously, someone who lives the other side of town will not be impacted, so it is, if they want it.
Yeah, okay. And I will reach out to you, and you can give me the details of how much is cut down, what they would, all right?
Yes, and just an update, they did reach out to PSE and G to install temporary lighting in Court Street.
They're going to put some lights.
I just got that this afternoon, yeah.
Thank you very much.
But it's in the warehouse. It says how many months it's reduced, if they went.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I've got, before I go to that door and they ask a question, I don't know, but I'll take that offline. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. A2, oh, your claims, I'm sorry. Yes, you had a question?
Oh, yeah. So 2401513, the Clear Cameras, the automotives one, I don't know, it was like 13,000. So I have a quick question on that. And again, maybe it's procedure, maybe, I don't know, has that check already been cut? Or is it cut after we approve the claims?
Are we talking to the director?
Sorry, to, I guess, I don't know, BA or to Director Franch?
Well, I mean, they don't get paid until after claims, if that's your question.
Okay, so it doesn't have, okay. So if we voted no on this, what happens?
Will be a breach of contract.
Well, I think we.
I'm sorry.
This is what we owe them, this is what we pay them.
I think we've determined in the past that.
I think they were paid already.
These claims require council approval.
Oh, no, claims don't require, just for your knowledge.
Just for our knowledge.
Okay.
You've already approved them through all the other resolutions and contracts and whatnot.
So we don't vote on, we don't vote on claims?
If I could just interject, if I, if I understand it correctly, I think they're paid already, and I think the claims come before us after a PO has been issued and paid.
The PO has been issued but not paid. We actually send out the payment following the claims list, but regardless, it's for presentation, not for.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't, our vote means nothing. It's already.
It never has.
Well, we could, it would be a breach of contract if they do something and we don't pay them after we've signed a contract for them to do something.
All right, it's my one question.
A lot of times, we've held a claim, right? We don't know and held a claim, and then it usually comes back in another form or something like that.
CC1 or Taylor stuff might bring up that conversation coming up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, are you satisfied?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Councilwoman Imus, did you have any questions on claims?
No, that's okay.
All right, so.
A2.
A2.
Got to vote on A1.
Oh, no, we're not. We weren't carrying it.
All right, sorry.
I'm sorry. And I thought we, do we vote on claims? I thought, oh, you took it out of consent. Okay, we'll call a vote on claims, Mr. Farina.
On the claims, Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Imus?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
He said aye.
Aye.
Mr. Cintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
A2, resolution approving a community host agreement with Karma Dispensary LLC. I believe this was.
Me.
Councilman Fisher.
Has anything changed since the last meeting?
No.
So it just got.
We should carry it.
We should carry it again?
Yep.
All right, we'll carry it again, if that's okay with people.
So, yeah, I'm sponsored, I'm fine with carrying it again.
Perfect.
Okay, A2 is carried, Mr. Farina?
Mr. Cohen?
No, no, it's carried.
Carried, okay.
Yeah, we don't.
By the way, I'm not.
CC1, which is a resolution agreement with Stevens hyphen Reciprocal Facilities Usage Agreement.
Yeah. That's me.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yeah. I read through the agreement. I guess the only question I have is, is it the same as what we have, or has it changed somehow with what we had previously? No, it's the same. Okay, thanks, that's it. It was a lot of words.
Okay. Mr. Farina, can you call the vote for CC1?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Imus?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
T1, which is a resolution to award no-cost, non-fair, and open contract to Walker Construction for completion of 916 Garden rehabilitation support. Councilwoman Fisher?
Yeah, this is one, I just think it's worth having a description for the public. If you could describe, like, what this is and timing and et cetera. It's such an important topic, and I think it's helpful. 916 Garden, it's the elevator, that's what we're asking him to tell us.
That's what he's going to tell us if we let him speak.
Okay, great. So 916 Garden.
This is for Mary, not the rest of the public, just for Mary.
Of course, of course. I'm going to face the council, though. So 916 Garden is a very specialized garage, and so Walker Consultants has been brought on to help with some of that specialty engineering cost-benefit analysis work. And they, their contract has expired. They still have money left in their contract, and we're looking to finalize the RFP by the end of the year, early next year, for this. And so this contract extension would get us through that process and help with some
of the more technical work that's going on there.
Awesome, thank you. I get asked about this all the time, so I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Farina, T1, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Imus.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
T3 is a resolution authorizing the city of Hoboken to submit an application to the New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority's FY fiscal year 2026 Complete Streets Technical Assistance Program.
It's me.
Councilwoman Fisher.
I guess I just want to have a better sense of, I think I know what this is, which is just being able to get resources from the state. It looks like it's to update our bike master plan and green circuit, which I'm generally in agreement of, but I, I guess I want to understand like what's happening and how, how this is going to filter through the community. Like what does that actually look like and, and what's the plan around doing a new plan?
Yes, so the New, the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, which is our local MPO, offers a technical assistance program. So this wouldn't be any funding that the city would receive, it'd be, the grant would be in extra capacity, technical support. And then the scope of that project would, if we're awarded, would be written as part of the, the award for that. So there's currently no, we, we, planning to do, obviously we do community engagement. We would look at, you know, certain number of community meetings, surveys to better learn, you know, where residents think that the bikeway network should go and the green circuit, which has, you know, multiple development projects are underway, but then there's some gaps in the green circuit. So this plan would help address that and potentially other deficiencies in the, in the bikeway network that we have since the plan was last updated in 2010.
Okay.
Can you tell us what an MDO is?
MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
Thank you.
I have one other question, Director. I'm always skeptical in the Transportation Department because of what your predecessor has told us. And so you said there's a couple of meetings, you're going to tell us things, we're going to do all this. I, I just, what I heard you say was, you're going to come to, once there's meetings, you're going to come to us, talk to us, give us the feedback, tell us what's going on before we make any type of decisions. Is that correct? Yeah, I think I was talking more about public meetings, but before.
But not the city council. So you're saying you don't want to talk to the city council, only the public?
No.
Which has been the way it's been for eight years.
That's my question, because. I think if the council wants to hear from us, we'll, we'll, we'll present to the council. Well, I would request that when you get, whatever we get the data in the public meetings, before we make any moves, that it comes back to the council and we can talk here.
And you actually get the council feedback as opposed to excluding the council from the process, which has always been the case.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Back to 1835.
For, I've been on for 10 years and when Mayor Zimmer said that the city council cannot be part of the master plan process.
Okay.
It's been since then.
Mr. Lor, please call the vote.
On T3, Councilman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Imus.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabour.
Yes.
Councilwoman President Zano.
Aye.
Councilman Quintero.
Aye.
Councilman Ramos.
Aye.
Councilman Russo.
Aye.
Council President Doyle.
Aye.
Public portion.
Public portion. Jeremy McCullough.
Did you know that?
Notes this time? It's my daughter's.
Your timer?
Okay, all right. I debated wearing white today, the darker colors take the pounds off camera, but it's the week after Thanksgiving, I ate a lot, and let's be honest, I'm not hiding anything. Three things I want to talk about here. Start by acknowledging everybody here. Jay McCullough from the Third Ward. I'm going to talk about the Grand Street Protected Bike Lane, the impact of polling stations in public schools, and some straightforward time permitting budget revenue ideas. So first, the protected bike lanes. I've been out there with Pat Waiters for an hour last week, talking to all the neighbors in my vicinity of Grand. So I got a couple of neighbors that live in two four-unit buildings. They have tandem parking and they used to rely on the double-wide street in order to shuffle their cars around and getting it out. And so they lost that with the pilot and they were kind of stuck in their garages for a while, but they were exchanging emails. I sent them over to Greg Francasi, which, I'm not pronouncing his name right. And they got a space outside his two properties and they got some yellow striping in recently this week, which is now allowing them to use their garage. So kudos to the city for working something out for the benefit of those eight units. Additionally, I think this, that spot can probably now double as a temporary parking or loading zone. There is not a sign, but there could be. Amazon is still using Grand Street. There was an October email thread with the city that said they were going to be restricted from parking outside 15 Church Towers. My neighbor, she's going to speak in a little bit, Megan, saw them outside and noticed they were still down there a few weeks, so we followed up with the city on that. And I think Greg got back to me, I did not have time to read his response. And lastly, this upset some people on Twitter, but America is a car dependent, sorry, America's car dependency is an epidemic. And so that's why I think we're struggling, oh, these are out of order, that's why. Safety imperative, okay. I've been teaching the kids to look both ways when crossing and now we look an extra way for the bike lane. So that's, we've been adjusting to that. But a recap on the head-on bike collision, that's why I was out there at Pat Waiters last week. So I don't think that was the bike lane's fault. I read the NICSOL alert, I know Paul doesn't trust all the NICSOL data, so I got down there and I interviewed some people. One guy, he said the lights, the only lights he saw were the lobby lights, so the bike lights presumably did not have their lights on. This happened at night, so that was a problem. But one bike came up Fifth Street and then salmoned, made a left, so they disregarded the painted lines that are supposed to go to the right in that little area that you're supposed to merge into. And then ended up, I guess, coming across, so it was a perpendicular crash, which I think not a lot of people, I originally didn't realize that. And then the EMTs, they rode right down the sidewalk and that's the photo everybody saw. So everybody thought maybe the streets were blocked, why are the EMTs on the sidewalk? Sometimes they like to ride on the sidewalk. But that was the quickest way where the accident was, having spoke to an EMT off the record there. So I don't think that the bike lane had anything to do with that. I am concerned about the painting and the markings are still not done, so people are still, there's arrows that are half-painted, I don't know when they're going to come back. I talked to the striping company and I think Greg told me like they're going to have to wait till spring to do the textured cover, so maybe that's why the ribbon cutting was postponed. But I don't think these streets width is really a problem here. If we consider Willow Ave, that is actually a critical point for the hospital, public transport, and that's super narrow. So when people ask me why Grand Street, well, it's not used by the HOP, it's cut off by Columbus Park, so the only other street that kind of gets that treatment in Midtown is Park Ave. So I don't know if that was also considered as a testbed. I think the difference there is you'd actually have to eliminate parking. That sounds pretty cool. I'm not saying we should do it, but I'd be lying if I said I wasn't curious what the data would be if we did eliminate parking on one whole side of the Park Ave for that. Impact of polling stations, public schools. Runoff election required, voting machines in schools without the usual day off, challenges with security and space for student programs. So Demerist, I saw, had trailers outside. This seems like it would sprung on Brant. I didn't get a response from the school staff I spoke to, I was curious how much heads-up they had. They said this is basically from the clerks, either the city or the county clerk decided when to use schools with this. So it is a security issue for them. It affected some of the school programming, for the kids had to be sequestered somewhere And so hopefully I'll follow up with them and maybe that's something I talk to Jerry about over coffee. Simple revenue ideas for the city budget, I realize the budget is looming. Overheard this at the Zino, the idea of a gas tax, I don't think that's really viable. And consumption taxes, is this the real timer? No, I still got 30 seconds, that's a bonus. Okay, consumption taxes disproportionately hurt the working class, so let's not do gas taxes. But these no parking signs, so I'm looking on Grand Street, paving's already done, they haven't been out in, in weeks, and I see these signs are up. It is a $45 per sign we could be collecting if we don't take these things down within two hours. That is Section 190, 12.1H, I did my homework there. Maybe we're overlooking that revenue. In New York, you can report an idling vehicle and share 25% of the fine, a lot of people make $87 a pop doing that. Lastly, I wanted to talk about Tyler Technologies, but if Fisher, if you can check your DMs, I wanted to comment on that proposal, we can do that offline. Eight seconds over. I yield, back to you, Jim.
Thank you, Jeremy. Rena Giancaspero. Close?
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I made a copy of this.
Sure. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rena Giancaspero. I live in Hoboken 75 years. I love Hoboken. I do not love all the different things that have occurred here with regard to overdevelopment and the way the streets are being handled and the bicyclists. I know it's a major issue, however, they do not, they're not in abeyance of any bike lanes. They come out of nowhere, they come down careening around corners the opposite direction. You have to be, I don't know what. I like to read this petition. I went door to door two days. Unfortunately, it was the holiday week and I couldn't get out anymore to get more signatures. I did go over the weekend, I have over 300 signatures here. It's not just Church Towers that signed it. I went up and down Grand Street, and by the way, while I was walking along Grand Street from 8th to 3rd, six people on bicycles with that new bike lane already established were in the middle of the street. Now they serpentine and they do whatever the heck they want to do. So here's the statement. The implementation of this pilot program is a disgrace, it's sadly typical of this administration. No notice to the residents, no community input, no thought to how this affects our neighborhood. Our safety and quality of life have been negatively affected. This current program makes it impossible for residents to be dropped off or picked up safely in front of their homes. Over the years, progress has made it harder to live in Hoboken. Cities continue to build up increasingly our population while parking spots continue to be actively eliminated. While we understand and respect that change is both inevitable and important, and I agree with that, respect that change is, we do not accept the burden being placed on the citizens and families that pay considerable taxes in this town, especially when the benefits, the safety are dubious at best. The new bike lane that is now in effect presents, or prevents anyone from being able to stop a car to allow for dropping off an elderly loved one, packing up the family in car seats, or just running basic errands, like Mayor Bala clearly demonstrated when he was caught illegally parked just to get a cup of coffee. I have a picture of that also. And while more concessions are made to those on bikes who really have ever observed the rules of the road, those of us who still live or rely on cars are made to suffer. What is worse is this pilot program may only be the beginning of making a bad situation into an untenable one. Progress requires some sacrifice, but it does not require complete submission. We will not tolerate the overreach any longer. If this is to be.
Carry through.
Carry through to the rest of Hoboken, our fellow citizens should know what is in store. We implore you to listen to the concerns of the residents and to stop this pilot program. I myself, I'm not against change, and change is inevitable. And there's been wonderful different changes made to Hoboken, the waterfront for one. I walk that thing daily, I love it. There are a lot of things, but this is so upsetting on Grand Street. My, the bread store across the street, the owner, I went in there with this, she was nearly in tears. She said, I can't get my flour delivered, my customers have stopped coming in because they always come and just drop, pick something up real quick and scoot off. Last week, a Penske, a big Penske truck had to come down Fifth Street, make the right, and then they backed up into the post office loading zone area. It's just impossible. On top of which, the beeps, the horns beeping because the traffic gets backed up down to the Acme parking lot. It's absurd. It's absolutely absurd who designed this. Somebody in a computer designed this thing and they have no understanding of what it's like to live in Hoboken. This town was the most highly populated town in the world during World War II. And it's berserk now, what's going on. And a lot of it, more common sense has to be put into things, in my opinion. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the petition signatures. Jim Vance.
Good evening again, council. I'm Jim Vance, I'm a Hoboken resident. First of all, I want to congratulate those who won and thank very much those who ran. Things don't work in a democracy if we don't have elections and, and it was a lot of really hard work and a lot of money people spent. And putting yourself on the land offers the opportunity to be rejected and that's not easy for any of us. So thank you, all of you, very much. Second of all, there's a lot of anger in this town. There's a lot of love in this town, there's a, a lot of friends in this town, but I think there's a residual anger that has caused some poison in this council and elsewhere. And it's a guy named Ravi Bala. I appreciate the anger. I'm angrier than most people, but this guy is gone. And it's time for all of us to let him go because there's so much that needs to be done together now and we just can't let that stymie us. We can't load it on, well, you were with Bali or you did that or, just forget about it, guys, life's too short. With regard to that issue participating, involving, the city council feels left out. Well, let me tell you, there are a lot of us out there that feel left out. You guys have committee meetings and make all sorts of decisions and none of us have any idea what's happening. So let's get more people engaged, but let's do it a lot quicker, you know? Don't operate on Hoboken time. Operate like you're a business and get things done. Now, with regard to Grand Street, I know it's difficult, change is difficult. Oh, it's not safe. Oh, the ambulance can't get down the street. This design was sought out and is done, and is done all over the country and it works. There are, there are lots of garages on both sides of the street that when the ambulance comes down the street, car can pull over, I got some pictures of it. The other thing about Grand Street is that it's a pilot project and hopefully, I hope under Mayor Jabour, that a lot of information comes back and, and is worked through so we have a clear understanding what it does and doesn't do. Now, I've also got a video that somebody took of a, of a kid riding a bicycle, probably eight, seven years old, riding a bicycle down that lane, comfortable, happy, free-range. His mom or dad's behind him with the camera, that's how you, they got the picture, but this kid's going to get comfortable in the street. He wouldn't have been out there if this street still was what it was with a bike lane on the side. It just won't happen. Everybody is scared. Whole lot of people tell me they're scared to ride bikes. Well, this, this bike, protected bike lane will help people not be scared and will get more people on bikes, which means less congestion. Everybody loves the car. Well, watch them sit around for hours trying to go anywhere. This bike lane doesn't stop that. So thanks very much, good luck to everybody.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. Vance. Mary Andreca.
Am I the last speaker?
No, you're not, Ms. Andreca.
Mary Andreca, 159 Ninth Street. First of all, congratulations to the winners, to our new mayor. Hopefully you got what you wanted. I'm actually here because I probably, I will not be here on the next one and I'm going to devote a little bit of this time to you, Mr. Doyle. You will be exiting and I wanted to say a few words. I've had a lot of contentious problems with this council through the years and I've been here too many times. I personally think you've made the best council president. You are.
I have another meeting, by the way.
Let me speak. You have been decent to me. We haven't always agreed, but you have never faulted me for that. You've kept your emotions in check, you've behaved like a grown man, grown person, and that has been really appreciated by me. I wish more of this council through the years had been like you. I think you've been the smartest guy on here because you hold your own and you know what you're talking about, but that doesn't mean people agree with you. But I always gave you the benefit of the doubt and I appreciate the fact that I was experiencing you. I know I'm embarrassing you, but that's what people can do up here. I want to thank you for your service. I would have never done it. I know Leah's in seventh heaven now and I'm happy for her. I'm happy for her. I've heard many a times, I never see him, I never see him. Well, she can see you now. I hope that, and you have been partaking in this city all the years I've been here, I think I've been here one year longer than you. Okay. The next thing is, and I'm very grateful, you have always been good to me, you've said hello to me on your bike, even though I have this contentious war with bikers, but I am grateful for your friendship. All right. The other thing I want to say is, this is very important, we have a 19, give or take, million-dollar debt. Taxes will have to go up. There's just no way around it. It's going to be massive, everyone's going to have to pay. It's going to happen. 10%, 12%, whatever. Get over it, folks, anybody listening out here, get over it. Renters, everybody but children, you're going to pay. I get it. I can't fight it, but I want to say this. I did not ask for million-dollar parks. I did not ask for bollards or the bumpouts or the Washington Street crap. I didn't ask for a lot of stuff. And how many times I've heard people in politics say, you want all these things, but you got to pay for it. You know what I want? And I'm never going to get it. An uptown laundromat. And I'm saying this publicly because as of 2017, I lost the Bloomfield Laundrette. So I went to Willow. And then it closed on June 11th, 2021, 21 or 22. And it has been hard for me because I don't have a fricking car. And I'll tell you, Sudsy Laundromat or whatever that's had this sign on there for a long time on Willow and Seventh. I just found out they were wanting to open a laundromat for HOA's homeowner associations. The class system is finally complete. Tenants need to do laundry, too. If anything, I've learned in this town, there is a definite class system. And I thank you for treating me as an equal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. You went over 10 seconds, Mary. Manuel Rivera Soler.
Thank you, Council President Manuel Rivera Soler. I as well was going to, like they say in Espanol, give you your tus laurels, your laurels, because I'm not sure, again, as well. I don't know if you have one more meeting or two more meetings, but perhaps the next meeting might be a little difficult. But again, as Mary Andreca said, you, at least my opinion, are one of the top-tier council presidents. I have to, I can't give you the number-one spot because that in my heart belongs to Gen Giattino. But you are very close, sir. And you are a gentleman when you are in your role. And you do listen to members of the public. You are stern sometimes, but that is what some, some of the qualities that it takes to do the job. You can't be always letting everything slide by. So with that, I say thank you so much, sir, for your service. It is appreciated, even though sometimes people don't show it all the time. But thank you and everyone who serves. You are all public servants. And again, people, not all the time, are going to see eye to eye. But respect is always important to have between human beings and fellow residents. So thank you. I'm going to proceed with a few things. Again, Council President, it's very important for everyone to know that elections always bring out the best or the worst of us sometimes. It is a battlefield almost, and it hurts when people, neighbors and others, and sometimes say harsh things to each other in the heat of the moment. And, you know, I don't want to use "in the heat of" war because it isn't, it shouldn't be a war. It should just be a contest. Who presents the best to the people, their concerns? That is the person who's going to win, or at least the person who convinced the greater number of people. So with that, I'm going to say the congratulations, of course, as everyone has said this evening, to, as they could say, we can use, I looked it up, we can use Madam Mayor-Elect Emily Jabor, or Mayor-Elect Emily Jabor. We would like to thank you. Thank you for running. Thank you for being of service to the people. Again, I wish you and your family all the best in this new beginnings, in this chapter that you are taking pretty soon. I am also hopeful that you bring unity and fresh beginnings to our city. The promises that were made in the campaign trail should be given serious consideration to fulfill. We here constituents now put our eyes to you as our new leader, as a person who we hope is a uniter and a person who is accessible, as all great leaders should. So thank you once again and congratulations. Congratulations to the other winners and the council at large. And again, a great thank you to everyone who ran, who ran in the runoff, who ran before that. Again, it's democracy. It's not pretty sometimes. It's rough, but it's the best we have, and we should preserve it at all costs. So also, Council President, I would like to say, of course, you all know, today is December 3rd, 2025. And on December 3rd, 1925, Maria Dolores Soler Lopez was born in Puerto Rico. That is my mother. She is now residing in heaven, and I wish her a happy heavenly birthday. I know that that is a personal thing. Members of the public don't need to concern themselves with what I am saying, but I think it's a beautiful thing to have her name forever engraved in the history of Hoboken. So again, I thank you for, you all for listening. And thank members of the public for their patience and their interest in being here tonight as well. Their participation, just being here, is important, and I thank them as well. So with that, Council President, I'm going to say, as I always do, slava Ukraini. And by the way, Council President, before I say the other part, I want to say to you, sir, I didn't mean to be disrespectful when I told you you could take vacation at Mariotopol. I said it wrong, but it is, obviously, I did two full pauses because the city is occupied by hostile forces, so don't go there. And again, we still pray for the residents there. And again, I'm going to say it again, slava Ukraini. Glory to Ukraine. Heroyem slava. Glory to the heroes. Thank you, Council President. God bless you. God bless you all, and God bless Hoboken. I yield back.
Thank you, Manny. Megan Lynn, or Lou, I'm sorry. Could be an N, it could be a U, could be an H.
Yes, hello, thank you so much. I wanted to talk about the Grand Street pilot. I live at 501 Adams Street. I'm a board member, owner, resident, and did not get a chance to sign the petition, so apologies add my name to that. I want, the main concern I have is that Willow Street goes downtown one lane, and so now does Grand Street. The hospital has only two one-way streets downtown. And this past Saturday, there were three fire trucks blocking between Sixth and Fifth Street because obviously they needed to take care of an emergency in 15 church towers. I am highly concerned about what will happen to those who may not have access to get to the hospital on time. There's a reason why cars pull over when there's an emergency. And right now, it was something that I brought up the second I found out about Grand Street pilot. We didn't have any community outreach to discuss these matters. But the second that email came out from City Hall, I sent a message specifically asking about the emergency services. I commented that 15 church towers frequently, if not once, twice a week, has emergency vehicles there. That is cops, that is a fire truck. We have a loading zone, but we allow overnight parking. There is no access for if an emergency happens. And forgive me, we can't plan emergencies. I see it from my window. My window overlooks the parking, that 15 church tower. So I'm concerned about residents. The whole spirit of this pilot was to maintain safety. And what about those that actually didn't plan and may have gotten into an accident elsewhere and need to get to the hospital? What is the city's plan for that? Quick win? Get rid of the, or make sure that the loading zone does not have overnight parking? That's just a quick win, but I really urge you to look at that. I recognize we want bikers to have safety. I am a biker. I did also ask the city about this about a year or two ago. I love the fact that we are prioritizing that. But bikers are not required to wear helmets here in the city. They are not getting tickets for salmoning or doing anything else, not stopping at the stop signs. We're not monitoring that, but we prioritized this pilot. And again, it's two streets, main busy streets with only one way down the street. I'm really concerned about those who really need access to the hospital. So I would love to have some answers on that at the next meeting. And that is all I have today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. No other members of the public are signed up to speak?
I'm going to close public portion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Onto first readings.
Ordinance for introduction. Ordinance adopting a non-distribution agreement between the City of Hoboken Heritage Village at Hoboken LLC and New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Fisher.
Yes.
Imus.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Ordinance introduction, amending Chapter 192, titled Parking for Persons with Disabilities to Add General Parking Spaces on Adams Street Between 12th Street and 13th Street.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Imus.
Yes.
Jabor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Ordinance introduction, amending Chapter 199, entitled Stop Streets Designated to Add Multiway Stop Controls at the intersection of Adams Street, 11th Street, Bloomfield Street, 6th Street, Grant Street, 2nd Street, Jackson Street, Ford Street, and Jefferson Street, and 9th Street.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Imus.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please read number six now, out of order.
Number six?
Number six.
Okay.
And then we'll do four and five.
Number six, okay.
And if you want, I can even help. Number six is an ordinance introduced, an ordinance to amend and supplement an ordinance establishing a schedule of classifications and allocations of title for the herein mentioned positions in the City of Hoboken. This is number six.
All right.
Please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Imus.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye. If you would just pause a moment, I think Mr. Councilman Ramos is going to step out. Ruben, I'll call you. There's a couple of things, you know, in your business, but just to check with you.
Back to number four.
We're back to number four.
Okay. Ordinance introduction of the City of Hoboken approving the application for a long-term tax exemption authorizing the execution of a financial agreement between the City of Hoboken and JB 112 North Urban Renewal LLC.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Present.
Mrs. Imus.
Abstain.
Mrs. Jabor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos, absent. Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Farina, I believe Councilwoman Fisher was present, she said.
Yeah, present.
Sorry about that.
She did not vote yes.
All right, every time.
Okay, an ordinance for introduction of the City of Hoboken approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement between the City of Hoboken and HWE Urban Renewal LLC.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher. Mrs. Imus.
Abstain.
Mrs. Jabor.
Yes.
President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos. Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Okay. He's, I think Ruben was leaving.
No, he's coming back.
He's still in.
Okay. Director Brown, yes, thank you.
Did you get Ruben?
Let Ruben know that if he was...
Oh, okay.
There are three items for new business, one of which Councilwoman Fisher has requested. Are you?
Yeah, we...
To waive the estoppel period?
Yes. And we have, I know we have to do it in order. One, an emergency, and two, the actual waiving of it. I think Brian.
We normally combine the resolution. Whereas the city council wishes for an ordinance amending Chapter 145, Section 145-25, to come into effect immediately. And whereas in accordance with NJSA 4069A-181B, the council wishes to declare an emergency so that the regulations contained in the ordinance may come to effect immediately. Now therefore, be resolved by not less than two-thirds of the whole council voting affirmatively. In accordance with NJSA 4069A-181B, the city council declares an emergency in order to allow the ordinance to come to effect immediately and be further resolved in accordance with NJSA 40, colon, 69A-181B. The ordinance shall be considered to have become effect immediately upon passage. Be further resolved that the city clerk and all other municipal officers are hereby authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to effectuate the purpose of this resolution.
For Diane's purpose and maybe anyone watching, the estoppel period is 20 days from when the mayor signs it. It basically goes into effect 20 days later. It gives the public the ability to challenge it. We don't often do that unless we feel it's an emergency, it's time-sensitive, et cetera. We've already heard a lot of feedback. We take it fairly seriously. You don't, we don't do it very often.
It provides an opportunity to file a lawsuit to challenge.
Right, exactly. Right, exactly. But since it's our own pilot, we, and since we've gotten a lot of feedback from businesses, that's why we want to waive it. And so the mayor still has 10 days to sign it, so it still wouldn't be effective. But when he signs it to make it, to start the estoppel, it would be effective that day as opposed to 20 days later.
Okay, Mr. Laura, would you call it?
Are we going to do both?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Emergency resolution.
Together.
All together?
I think he's, he put it in one resolution as is.
You got it. All right, all together for the emergency resolution and waiving the estoppel period for B836. Councilman Cohen.
No.
Councilwoman Fisher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Imus.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jabor.
No.
Councilwoman President Zano.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quintero.
No.
Councilwoman Ramos. Councilwoman Russo.
Aye.
Council President Doyle.
No.
Passes.
We need two-thirds. You need six.
Two-thirds for the win.
And we did it together.
We need six.
Got it, got it.
Yep.
Six fails, okay. Thank you. What's the third item?
That's the first item. Number two. We are going to have to have a special meeting for the appropriate, temporary appropriation come January 1st, since the swearing-in for the new council members and the mayor is the 15th. So we're proposing the 5th. It'll be virtual, it'll be 10 minutes. You know, I mean, all we're going to have is the temporary appropriation. January 5th. The Corporation Council, we can't do it on the 17th, which is what I was suggesting. But there will probably be some of the, like, the newspaper designations and things that we can do on the 17th. Or they could even go to, if they have to be done before the 15th. So...
Would it be 7:00 PM on Monday?
I mean, I'm, you know...
Is, is that going to be?
2 o'clock.
Is that going to be every year? I mean, I thought the whole point of changing...
It's every year.
So the whole point of the state law change was, I don't even know why, but they changed it to the 15th, but now we have to have a January 5th meeting anyway, every year?
I suspect we will, yes. So, I mean, it should just be pretty perfunctory unless, unless people don't want to fund.
And we don't have the ability to approve in December?
We, that's what I just said.
Yeah.
We couldn't, I suggested we do it on the 17th.
Yeah.
But you have to be in the new year to do it. So, we couldn't, we can't even meet on Christmas.
We need to talk to our new assembly person to put up a new rule because that makes no sense then for us to start in January 15th if we have to have a meeting anyway. I'm just saying.
It's state law, so...
No, it was, I know, it was recent. It's one of those crazy state laws where they don't really think it through for everything.
Okay, so the, 7 o'clock, is that fine with everybody on a Monday night?
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing is, as we've all should have received, there's been an appeal of zoning board approval, Mr. Evers, for, it's irrelevant who it is. So, it's an appeal which, there's 95 days to have a hearing on it, and the clock starts, started the 26th of November, which gets you to essentially, excuse me, March 1st. I may be off by a day or if, I don't think it's leap year. So, so we just need to think about, I mean, under the statute and our code and the state law, if we don't meet, I mean, if we choose consciously not to have a hearing, it'll, it'll be affirmed. So, not that I'm suggesting or recommending that, but, or we can have the hearing, and since it can go to March, it could be the next council body, it can be, we can do it in, before the 15th of January as this entity. So, I may be pulling people as to when they want to do it, you know, before or after. If it's after January 15th, I guess I'll miss out.
You don't want to miss that.
No. No, I mean, I actually, you know...
Would the next meeting at 6:00 have an hour before the regular meeting be sufficient?
I think we should probably do it just a separate one. You know, I mean, well, it's...
Was Steve one of the...
Why don't we do this offline?
Was Steve on...
Why don't we do it offline? Yeah, just do it, just, why don't we just email? Figure out what we wanted to do.
We'll figure it out, okay.
But is Steve, is, was Steve voting? Did Steve vote on whatever the appeal is, Firestone?
That's, that's his problem, yeah. You're asking whether he will be, he might...
Yeah, no, I'm just...
I don't think, I don't think, Council, Corporation Council, he can, you know, the new, the council elect is the chair of the...
I'm aware. I don't know the answer to the question. It's something we'd have to research.
But it's more of, let's assume he did because he was part of it, then do we want to do it with a full council of nine, including you, or in the new year, it may risk of just having eight or whatever?
Frankly, it'll just, the only change will be us two, but I'm inclined to do it before the 15th.
Then let's do it.
Just to get it, you know, unless we decide that we've looked at the substance and we don't want to have a hearing, which will be this, the same of, you know, but again, I'm not recommending that.
The quick, those notes that we got, right? You're talking about the transcripts I asked.
There was a 30-page document, which was mostly, it was about five or six pages of his argument, and there were resolutions from the zoning board.
Yeah, the transcripts you, I asked for, they're not as tedious as the other hearing.
It's only one hearing.
Yeah, it's not that bad. I was scrolling through it.
It's probably 40 pages.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can get through it pretty quick, so that's, that's why I was like, it's not that bad.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll email you all and we'll see what the consensus is, okay? I have nothing else.
Close session, right?
Excuse me?
Are we supposed to do close session for the...
Yes, well, Councilman Russo is...
Yeah, please. As I did last night privately, I'd like to take just a moment to publicly congratulate Councilwoman Jabor on her victory. It's really important that we all continue to try to unify the city, so I'm looking forward to working with her, her administration, and the newly-elected council members.